Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll take attendance, I'm here, John. Where'd he go? He's here, right? Alan?
Yes.
Greg? Michelle? She's here, don't let you go. Jim? Stephanie is going to be late. Jennifer? Lisa? Michael? Julie? Peter? Okay, we have a quorum. So, we will move into the next item on the agenda, which is a special recognition for our volunteers. Pat?
Yes, my pleasure. Good evening, everyone, happy to see you all. This is always a lovely night, and I'm glad to see so many volunteers could make it. I'm going to start with the district volunteers. This year, I picked two, which I've never done before, but, you know what? What the heck. I couldn't choose, and I didn't want either of them to not be recognized during my tenure. First one is Reverend David Peters. And, this is going to sound interesting to everybody. I don't think we've ever had a conversation of more than 20 words in the six years that I've been here. And, he's probably saying himself, "I don't understand why you would pick him," or "pick me," if we don't even really talk. But, you know what? You don't have to speak to be recognized. Reverend Peters has been here every time there has been an issue in Roxbury and/or Chapag. He is selfless, he is kind, he is patient. He unfortunately is here for good things, but I see him a lot of times when he's here for sad things. And, he takes the students and the staff and the community into the palms of his hands, and he helps heal them. And, I am in awe of his leadership, of his passion, of his kindness. And, he does it in a way that goes unnoticed, but not by me. So, Reverend Peters, it has been an honor to work with you, even though we really don't know each other. But, I really, please come on up and accept this. The next person I have spoken to many times, and her kids, and her husband. Paula Conway is currently the co-president, I believe, at Chapag. Oh, just the president? Oh, just the president, okay. But, has been co-president here, she's been president at Booth Free. She has been a parent who has been very supportive of me and our district PTO, and everything that goes on in our district for many years, and probably many years to come, because she has three students in the school system. Her husband also happens to work here. But, Paula is a go-to mom, if we need something done, we call Paula. She was a co-chair of the Minds and Emotions since it's got here, gotten in the district, and I'm sure she'll continue. She's involved and prepares the dance, the district dance, in February for all three elementary schools. She prepares movie nights, and she's always involved in our school system and never says no. And, I just really feel like it's parents like Paula, and many others, there are many other parents, but Paula represents a wonderful group of parents who volunteer, who give of their time, and who deserve to be recognized. So, Paula, come on up and thank you for all you do. Okay. We have our volunteer from Booth Free, Yvonne Gamlin. Richie, come on up, Yvonne, stand next to me. Yvonne has a positive attitude and exuberates just wonderful positive energy as she walks through the school doors. I hear you're a horse person, is that correct? Yes, Karen told me. Karen knows all the horse people. So, you kind of like gravitate to each other. She's an active member of the PTO, she's volunteered her time for many school events and classroom activities. Most notably, she's the chairperson of Santa's Pancake Breakfast, the Holiday Tree Raffle, and coordinator of the hot lunch program. Yvonne is always willing to help when needed. On behalf of the Booth Free community, the Board of Ed, and myself, we thank you very much for all you have done. Okay, Diana Kelly is not here from Burnham, she will be back on June 4th. Okay, we have two parents who are going to come on June 4th. Okay, Kristin Nettleton, come on up, Kristin. Okay, yeah, I'm going to give you this, it's a little heavy, but this way I don't have to hold it and read. Kristin Nettleton is the volunteer from WPS. And, she's being recognized because she's an active member of the PTO over the past several years. Her lovely family's here too, which is great. Throughout the time, she's organized many events and made herself available to assist whenever possible. She volunteers in the classroom and assists with learning centers, as well as the liaison to the parent community, sharing important information, we appreciate that. She helps with the hot lunch each week and organizes the senior Thanksgiving luncheon and staff appreciation celebration. If you have never been to the senior Thanksgiving luncheon, you need to go. Okay, you two are seniors, you should just go in there, and it is fabulous. It is fabulous. For Field Day, she embraces the challenge of coordinating volunteers, setting the menu, and purchasing food to serve for the barbecue for the staff and students. That's also very yummy. She's a member of the Drug Prevention Council, which is wonderful, and brings important information to our PTO members. I believe that David Peters is also on that Drug Prevention Council. She's drenished with her time and always approaches things with a kind spirit and sense of humor. They appreciate her at WPS and appreciate her leadership and her positive attitude as she helps make it a wonderful learning community for everyone.
Thank you.
And, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't think Maggie Colangelo is here, am I right? No. Okay, so our last one, and I don't see her either, is Trish Stinson here? Oh, so she's probably going to run here like a maniac. Okay, so Trish is Jim Stinson's wife, and Alan is on the team. So, there are things that are more important than this right now. But, if she comes in, we will honor her, and we will take a picture of all the volunteers with me and the board, and then help yourself to some goodies, there's goodies there for the kids, for anybody. I thank you so much, the volunteers are so important to our school system, I'm really ashamed of all you do. Thank you. And, I also just want to say, and her husband is right over there, Mr. Stinson, teacher's here, Stinson. He said to me one day, we were walking together from the senior project of Life Star. Okay, we had just finished, and everybody was out, and we were walking together, and he says, "I just want to let you know that I can't thank you enough, and the board, and the community for allowing students of staff members to attend Chapag's schools, Region 12 schools." Because the opportunity that it has provided my family, and my wife, I mean, you're getting a prize, has really been outstanding. So, Jim, I thank you for those kind words, you're a wonderful educator, you have a fabulous family, your son's doing great on the baseball field, and your wife is also a role model for all of our other parents and our students. So, congratulations, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Greg, can I please ask the board members to take their seats so we can reconvene? Thank you. What's that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, we are, we never adjourned or postponed, so we're still in session. So, we're going to pick up where we left off on Thursday evening. And, what we talked about on Thursday evening is that we would finish the discussion first, before we proceeded into the educational meeting. The board asked the chair to contact the missing members and asked them to please review the videos and bring them up to speed, so we did not rehash Thursday evening. I don't think anybody wants to replay it. And, I have talked to all the board members who were not here. They've all each confirmed that they've done their homework, they've watched the videos. We're appreciative of all of the discussion that we did have Thursday evening. And, so now we're going to pick up where we left off.
We have updated sheets, if you'd like.
I have that, actually. Yeah, I'm going to pass it around, thank you. So, to recap, we had a motion, which was passed, to accept line item number one, which is a reduction in the superintendent's salary, and the elimination, line item six, the elimination of the art teacher. At that point, we then adjourned. So, we need to pick up where we left off, and that was with the discussion of the administrative position. Michelle, did you have anything you wanted to add at this point? Or should we open up the floor? Or should I give you the floor, I should say? Whatever.
I don't know, we just want to continue where we left off. And, if somebody has something they would like to say, or a proposal. I believe the administrator position was where we left off.
Right, and there was, it's being proposed, one of the options is point five. There was some discussion about whether or not that should be one. So, with that, I'm going to open it up to the floor and invite anyone who has questions, who wants to follow up on that. Greg?
Yeah, I have a question. On this administrator, number nine on the list, you have an amount, which I assume is salary, and then you have Medicare on above. Is that salary or salary and benefits?
Salary.
Okay, because there are also other savings, you would have insurance, medical insurance.
There was no unemployment, we're washing against each other. We have to pay, there's unemployment that would be added back in, so it's, there's slight savings.
Bob, microphone, please.
I'm sorry, the offset is the unemployment that we would have to pay, that we don't know about, so we wash the benefits against the unemployment. Because we don't know what will happen at that point.
Okay. Greg, any? I'm sorry, I couldn't see whether or not you had another question.
That was it, thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, could you explain the difference between, you mentioned point five, which is, I see here, and one. Is that a 2.5, or is that a one? What is the possibility of a one FTE administrator?
You would double that number.
Oh, no, I know that, but I mean, it would be one FTE as opposed to 2.5s?
Yes, yes.
Well, so that would be 150,000 about?
149,750, to be exact.
And, what are the logistics of that? I mean... Can... How do we justify a 1.1 FTE administrative change? Can we do that?
Well, the question is really to, the question is real to the staff and whether or not they could accommodate that level of a cut. But, if we did go there, I'm confident that, I mean, it's really going to land in the lap of the new superintendent and the staff to make this work, if this is where we decide we want to go. It's up to the board, obviously, we need to make this decision at this point in the process. But, I'm confident that if we did go there, that our staff will rise to the occasion and make it work as they usually do. My sense is that with one FTE, it's one FTE, and that doesn't necessarily mean that a single position will be eliminated wholesale. Again, these are decisions that the new superintendent will have to grapple with, but it could mean a rebalancing of the administrative staff and to take on partial responsibilities. That would be my guess as to how that would work. Greg?
I'm going to move that we adopt number, reduction number nine, but amend it to say one FTE administrator. 1.00 FTE administrator.
Okay, any further discussion, Pete?
Well, I'm a little late into all of this, because I missed the last meeting, and I feel a little awkward coming into this process at this point. I don't know if it's really fair, but... Taking out people at this stage of the game, to me, doesn't sound logical. It seems to me, during the course of the year, the superintendent comes to you and says, "Look, we have some areas that we can reduce and make changes." I hate to use a defeated budget to start taking out people or positions unless you can really do that without affecting the system. So, I guess my question is, does this affect the system in any way? Substantially? I mean, once you start taking out people, either it affects somewhere or it doesn't. I mean, I don't know how it doesn't when you start taking out people unless you have a surplus of people. And, I hate to use the budgetary process to take out people. It seems to me you do that during the course of the year in a logical way, where the superintendent comes and has evaluated the system. When you get to the budgetary process, he or she can make legitimate claims to reducing staff. I hate to use the budgetary process to reduce staff unless you're under so much pressure. I don't know, it doesn't seem like a logical way to do business. But, maybe you can convince me, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I feel a little awkward right now speaking.
Michael?
I wasn't out at the last meeting either, Pete, so I don't think you need to apologize for that. You could certainly have an opinion, even if you weren't at that meeting. I think that this proposed cut is a logical one, and I think there's a number of reasons for it. The first main reason, I think, that we could look at is that this board has had no problem making teacher cuts repeatedly over the last number of years. I mean, we can go back and we can see how many years now we've cut teachers, year after year after year. And, I think it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me as a board member, nor do I think it makes sense to the general public that we could make those teacher cuts with the understanding that our student population is declining, yet never, ever touch the administrative staff. I think we need to have a corresponding cut in the administrative staff to right-size, if you will, the administration compared to our numbers of students. I think that makes sense.
Greg?
I also wasn't at the last meeting, but I did endure the watching of the videotape from beginning to end. So, I'm glad I wasn't at the last meeting in some ways, but I enjoyed listening to you talk about these things. Look, we had, I mean, most budgets are going up 1% or 2% a year in most places, maybe even more. We have, over the course of the last eight years, prior to this year, the total increase in our budget over eight years was 4%. Okay, that's about 4 tenths of a percent, 4 or 5 tenths of a percent a year on big years. We had three budgets that actually went down. And, the problem when you have, when you reduce it below zero, is you then take the budget and you've reduced it, so that next year, you start at your zero budget. If it went down 1% the previous year, you started with a 1% cut. And, the last time I looked, inflation goes up, it doesn't usually come, when it comes down, we start worrying when it's actually going into negative territory, when prices are dropping. But, inflation always seems to be above zero. So, the problem is, is that you're automatically cutting your budget. Every year, you have a zero budget, it's a cut. Every year, you have a negative budget, it's a cut that continues year after year. So, we're at the point now where we don't have any other obvious logical places to go. We have complaints from the public that our student population has dropped. And, yes, we have seen the number of teachers drop in a corresponding rate, but it's not a one-to-one line, you don't lose a teacher every time you lose 30 students, it doesn't work that way. But, we have not reduced the administrative staff. All things being equal, yeah, we'd like to have a huge administrative staff. But, can a district with fewer than 700 students afford the staff that we have? And, the answer is increasingly no. And, what I don't want to see is this budget go down again, and then we put up another budget sometime in June or July, and before you know it, we're sitting here in this thing. So, we're going to have to look for costs, and here's the problem. I don't want to reduce monies in this budget that hurt students. The delivery of education is why we're here. Yes, administrators are involved in that, and yes, they're important to that, and yes, they're critical to that. But, they are not the front line of impacting students immediately. And, frankly, when I'm looking at the items that are on this list, the reduction in the superintendent's salary, well, that's wonderful, that's easy, that's a no-brainer, that you approved last time. But, you also approved taking out a piece of an art teacher. And, I think that's a potential problem, and I want to address that separately. But, that's impacting students immediately. And, if that art has anything to do with the art that I see produced in that hallway out there, which is truly astounding, I mean, there's some brilliant photography out there and other artworks, and it's really fine work, and that's happening because our students are being inspired and taught. And, I don't want to see that kind of a cut. I don't want to cut a piece of an art teacher. But, then I look at number three, which is the Z-Space technology. Well, now we're talking about something that's immediately impacting students being potentially for a cut. Facilities and maintenance, I'm having trouble figuring out how we're going to get the maintenance in these facilities. We have four old schools, three of them are positively ancient by school standards, and the other one is nearing ancientness. We've got schools, in case of Booth, that has a piece of it that was built in 1856. Those buildings require tremendous capital needs and tremendous maintenance, so I don't see how we can go anywhere there. Now, you're looking at this reading power speaker, and soccer goals, and weight room improvements. Well, yeah, I suppose you could defer some of these things for a later budget. Educational assistance, I don't know, I don't know enough about that, and I hope to hear more. Whether a library clerk, it's a small amount of money that's involved there. So, there aren't really a lot of places where we can save significant money to get the towns, and in particular, my town, on board with this budget. And, so I think, as much as I don't want to do this, I don't see that we have a lot of choice. And, so Pete, to answer your question, will it interfere with operations? Well, it means that other people are going to have to take on those jobs. So, you're going to add a few more things, depending on which administrator or how they deal with it, it'll add work to other administrators. But, I'm sorry, it's either that or diminish the educational program, and I just will not diminish the educational program directly. Sorry for the long...
Any other comments regarding the motion that's on the floor for the administrator, John?
I agree with Mike and Greg. You know, historically, in Region 12, there were days when the elementary population was twice as great as it is today. We have 269 students, pre-K through 5. Again, historically, there was one principal for all three elementary schools back in the 80s, and I think it's 80s to almost 1990. And, the middle high school also, we have 403 student population with a principal and an assistant principal. So, I think some of those duties can be combined, and we could easily cut one administrator.
Thank you. Michelle? Did you still have your hand up? Don't feel compelled.
No.
I thought I saw your hand go up before.
I don't want to repeat a lot of what I said before. I don't think we can easily cut an administrator. I think we might have to, but I would not say easily. I think all of our administrators do a lot of work, we've asked a lot of them, because we were trying to improve the education that we offer. We're bringing in new curriculum continuously and changing things to bring this, our education into the 21st century. So, I think, I don't think cutting an administrator is an easy decision. I do think that it might be a decision that we do have to make. We have been talking about it at the board level, and we, to answer your question, Pete, we felt that the timing wasn't right because of the leadership change with the superintendent. But, we may have to just move that time schedule forward because of the budget that went down. It's going to be a challenging year, I think, because we have a lot of planning to do up here at the middle high school for Ag-STEM, and we'll be down one of the planning people. So, it will definitely be a challenge, and everyone's going to have to step up and help to make that happen smoothly. So, it is with, I don't know if regret's quite the right word, but...
Reluctance.
Reluctance is a good word, with reluctance, it might be what we need to do at this point in time.
John?
So, I shared this last week, so I'm not going to try to repeat it, but I appreciate what Pete said, because I was feeling the same way that I, in the 11th hour to come and to decide to take away an administrator, leaves me feeling not great about it, because I feel like there needs to be more thought in the process, not just doing it because the budget went down. And, I just would like to remind the board too, that, you know, I can appreciate the fact that, you know, we've let teachers go in the past, but it's never been easy. And, you know, there've been times where we've had lots of people come to talk about cuts of nurses and paras, and so I'd like us to just have some sensitivity about the fact that we have a full-time administrator that works very hard for our district. And, I just would like us to just be mindful about that. Because even though I agree with you that the art teacher is something that I struggle with, and I look at the art in the mall, and I don't want to see an art teacher leave. I don't want to see an administrator leave either. And, so I think they all hold value, and I think we need to be mindful of that.
Any other comments regarding the administrator? John?
Well, I'm sorry that I used the word easily, but I'm just, I was just, again, restoring, referring to a time in this school district when the... a time in this school district when the population was twice as great as it is now, and we had far less administrators. Could we try it for a year and see what the implications and ramifications would be to cut a full-time administrator?
Well, I'm not sure we necessarily want to view this as an experiment of sorts, but you're, nothing is irreversible, I guess is your point. But again, I would, I would say that I don't think the board is endeavoring down this path without understanding or having confidence in the team we have, that they're gonna get this done. If we, if that's what we decide to do, that we've got a team that can execute. And if we didn't have that faith, then we shouldn't be doing it. So I think it's important to note. So with that, if there are no further questions, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Yes, there was. There was. Got it? All those opposed? All those abstained? Thank you. Okay. So there were further comments?
New number from the business manager?
Uh, I'm sorry. Mike, please.
One-point-eight percent, twenty-one million, seven seventy-two, eight fifty-two.
Greg?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we adopt recommendation number seven. Get that on the table for discussion.
Second.
Okay. Any further comments?
I don't know what you mean by that, that we adopt number seven.
That we adopt recommendation number seven to reduce, this is on educational assistance, reduce it by forty-five thousand, ninety-seven dollars.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay. Open up the floor. Pete?
You know, again, I missed the last meeting. Is there a number that everybody has in their mind that they want to get to, that makes them feel comfortable, that they can put the budget out there? I'm a numbers person, I always was. I leave what's in the number to the superintendent. You know, I'm a guy who likes to find a number, and then the people who are in charge and run the system, they make the decision, because I don't know every aspect of what's in the system, how it's functioning, because I'm not in the system.
I think, I think Greg, I think Greg is suggesting that we go further. And that's what we're gonna debate, and if you don't agree, then you could say we've gone too far, and that's it.
Yeah, I'm getting, well, what's the bottom line that board members are looking for? I want to know what your bottom number is. What is it?
It, we need a passable budget, Pete, and the board's gotta figure out, everybody has their opinion, is coming to the table, what we believe a budget that's gonna be passed, and, and I'd say, everybody's got a number in their head. Yours is probably lower than where Greg is. Just speculating. Based on your comments.
But, but I'm, I'm
But I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think you're gonna canvass the board and get, I mean, that's what the, that's what the discussion's about. So we have a certain number now that we voted on.
Yeah.
Greg is now suggesting we add to it. The debate is whether or not we should. So you're, clearly, your opinion is, we shouldn't.
Right.
Because you believe we've gone too far.
Yeah, because I think that, from my perspective, one selectman shows up and says, I got a problem with this budget. I was in her office, I heard the whole story. And I'm not reactionary to what one selectman says or thinks, because they're not in the day-to-day system. And I personally told that selectman what she could do with her requests. And I think there's a point where it goes far enough. And I think we have to make that decision, instead of sitting here for an hour or two and deciding, what's the magic number?
Well, I think we need to let the process drive us to that decision. Michelle?
I would like to speak against Greg's motion, and in sort of response to Pete, what you were saying, I, based on our conversations last time about all of the rest of the items on this list, and the reasons people had to not cut them, I think we have done enough. I think giving up an entire administrator goes well beyond where I was originally comfortable. We've brought it below two percent. I don't know if somebody's looking for a magic number, but maybe that is useful when trying to talk to the public. But there was a lot of discussion about how important those educational assistants are, and I think our administration's gonna have their hands full figuring out how to complete the jobs that they need to do to keep our district moving in the right direction, and I don't think we need to handicap them by cutting more of their staff. So I'm, I am comfortable right where we are.
Further comments? Jim?
Well, I just wanted to respond to Pete about that we're just the Board of Ed, and we don't know really what's needed because we're not on the inside. This list is from the administration. This is their selections in order of preference for further cuts, you know, in the budget if the board feels like going there. Now, Michelle's, we're at one-point-eight. If the board wants to stop, it'll stop. Greg, I gotta say, just after hearing you say how much you will not affect the delivery of education to students, wanting to cut the educational assistance seems at odds, but in any event. Pete, this is a list prepared by the administration for us, so we have some insight to what they're thinking. I agree with Michelle's comments. I think, I think we're done.
Thank you.
Well, I did watch the video, which was fun. And I know there was, and I remember the discussion about the educational assistance. All of these, obviously, to echo a lot of what my colleagues have been saying, all of these troubled me. And even the reactionary aspect of it, Pete, troubled me as well. But there was discussion about educational assistance having to do with the fact that there was a certain student assistant ratio in two of the schools and not in the other. And even that was capped with an idea of, well, if it's a very high ratio in one school, and we now make this reduction in two schools to bring it closer to that, is that good, or is should we actually be adding another educational assistant to the school where the ratio is high? In other words, and that was a question we never really got the answer for, but we do have the principals here now. And that would at least, whether we pursue this or not, would at least fill in a question that I had, which is, if it's one to twenty-five, and one to sixteen, and one to eleven, and we remove two educational assistants, so it becomes one to eighteen, and one to fifteen, and one to twenty-five, is that a good thing because we're getting to parity? Or is it a bad thing because the one to twenty-five should be changed by adding an educational assistant there? So that's my question to the principals who are here now. Is this workable? Is this disastrous? And the reason I ask is that I'm hoping, because I wasn't here, that somebody who voted to, now that we have this big chunk from the administrator that we've decided to, to remove, I'm hoping that someone who was here and voted in the affirmative might consider restoring the art teacher. Because that is a very specific and important skill set that art teacher has. It's not as if all art is the same. There are, there are different aspects to the skills that a teacher has that are long-term embedded. Skills that are learned and practiced over many years, as opposed to just one can brush up on over the summer to make up for it. And I think perhaps if that did happen, and we were to restore an art teacher, the art teacher, it might behoove us to then make up for that by dropping these educational assistants in this kind of give or take. So that's why I want to know, is this completely onerous? I mean, if it is, then we just drop the subject and maybe try to add the art teacher back and see what happens, but is it onerous? Is it something that can be worked? Is it something that, as our school system changes, we should be adding to Booth, as opposed to subtracting from WPS and Burnham? What, what do you think about this? Not to put you on the spot, but, but, you know, but, you know, we're on the spot. Come on, enjoy it.
Kathy, can you, I'm sorry, but I have to ask you to speak into the mic.
Okay, so I am a little bit on the spot. I am concerned about losing the educational assistant at Burnham School because we are, although we're really small, and I get it, we have limited staff to begin with. And so the staff that I presently have with the configurations really helps us so that the educational assistants, for instance, will cover a certain, you know, sort of like kindergarten free play, so staff could have their common planning period. So when you're having two staff members that are planning for curriculum of three grades, the standards of three grades, we use all the folks that we have, and it's limited. It is limited. So it is concerning to me at the, at the moment. I clearly understand why people are looking for additional cuts, but you know, we are in our first year of new programming at Burnham School with two multi-age configurations, and using that staff is critical, so.
Greg? Emily, do you want to say anything, or is that?
Although we don't have the type of challenges that are occurring over at Burnham, within our school, we use them to support small group work, center work. It allows us an opportunity to do greater differentiation in the classroom. And we also utilize that person often, probably once at least a week on a regular basis to assist with substituting. We happen to run short often in that area, so it does allow for another body to assist. At WPS, we have to ensure that our reach program is fully staffed based on ratio. So if there's any needs in that area, I have to draw from all of the other staff K-five to support that area. So there's a little bit of management that also has to happen, and that person does assist in that way. So it does have a direct impact in student work, but also in the management of the programs that we are offering.
Well, then, having heard that from both of you, thank you for allowing me to put you on the spot. But from having heard that, I'd want to say that that's, that's made up my mind, and it's made me think about the fact that what we have here so far, with this art teacher aside, is we've made cuts to administration, both in terms of superintendent's salary and in terms of this FTE, which should be significant as far as our taxpayers and how we we invite them to vote again for the budget, for a new budget, because we're not touching programmatic or infrastructure funds. We're not affecting our students in terms of teachers, and that thank you for telling me this, because I know we don't need to dip in here. I wouldn't. I mean, it's Greg's motion, but now I have, I wouldn't vote for the motion. Thank you.
Greg?
Yeah, with due respect to my colleague, please, could you please remain up there? I, with due respect to my colleague, Mr. Brown, I think he asked the wrong question. Anytime you ask a principal of a school, we want to cut some of your staff, do you need them? I would be shocked if that person said, oh, you know what? Actually, we can live without them, you know, take them. It's not gonna happen. You're always gonna get, these people are integral, they're important. What I want to know is, if we eliminate these two positions, are you still gonna be able to deliver the educational program, or are you gonna be, are you gonna be materially hampered in your ability to educate the children in your school?
You know, I've worked in other districts where cuts, serious cuts have had to been made, and I will tell you that staff always rises to the occasion because we believe strongly in what we do. So we will always make whatever you give us work, because our focus is on, you know, making the students have a enriching education. So I mean, if that's what you call us to do, that is what we will do.
See, you can ask your question, and you can ask my question, and you will always get the same answers you heard tonight. So the problem is, it doesn't illuminate this. The question is, if, look, I want to see the art teacher restored. I hope someone who voted on that one will, will vote to, someone who voted to take the art teacher out will vote to put them back in, because frankly, I think that is, I mean, as much as I hate to eliminate any staff, and as much as I don't like to eliminate educational assistants who obviously perform a valuable function, I'm looking at the art in that hall, and I'm looking at the teacher here, and I'm saying, that is greatly affecting the educational program here at the middle high school. We're, I mean, when you look at the photography out there, and you look at the artists out there, and you say to yourself, there are direct career paths for those people. And here we are, taking someone away, and yes, will the work get redistributed, and will the other teachers figure out a way to carry it through? Yes. But if the teacher we happen to lose is the one, for example, in photography, that could be a real big loss, because that's an area that it's hard to concentrate on by just simply redistributing the work. And so for a variety of reasons, I think we gotta make some hard choices here. And if we're gonna add thirty-eight thousand dollars back in, and we take ourselves from somewhere around just north of two-hundred thousand in reductions down to a hundred and sixty-five, three-thirty-three, which would be one and nine together, I think we're gonna have to take some more cuts here. And there's not much on here that can be cut. And so I'm just suggesting that we gotta do something, and I think this area is one I don't want to cut, but it's an area where I think we're gonna have to cut it if we're gonna cut something, because everything else is probably gonna be a harder cut to make.
So do you want to, Greg? The motion on the floor right now is the one you made, which was the educational assistance. Do you want to table that motion?
No, I stand with it. I want to see it voted on.
Okay. Any further comment on that motion? Michelle?
The only other thing I wanted to remind everyone is that we've already cut two-point-five para positions in the first round of this budget. So we have already dipped into our support staff by two-point-five FTEs.
Thank you. Good point. Pete?
I want to make this clear to board members. I was gonna see if I can clear your sinuses. We're not in a recession. And you're sitting here talking like we're in a recession, and we have to clean out people, areas of the budget, whatever it may be. We're not in a recession. I think you lost your minds. Really, I think you have. The budget in its very beginning wasn't that big a deal. I haven't heard anybody in the community screaming that they're financially having a problem. The mill rate's going up. This is happening, that's happening. I can't stay here. I mean, I think you're nuts. I really do.
Please. Jim?
I'm gonna vote against the motion, and with regard to the art teacher, I was one who voted, I came in late to the meeting, but I voted to eliminate the position, but that was after this school principal told us that the position could be covered. Greg, I hear what you're saying, if the person we're gonna lose has some special skill, but I think it's a balance. We were assured that the classes, coverage could happen for art with this cut, and that's why I voted for it. So I wouldn't vote to bring it back. That's it. Thank you.
Lisa, did you have a question?
My comment was on the art teacher, so I don't know if we want to finish this motion.
Can you hold that? Let's, I'd like to finish this motion before we dig into that one. So Michael?
Just very quickly, I hope everyone was listening carefully to what Emily and Kathy were saying. I think, could they do it? Sure. Would it be ideal for the education of the students at both of their respective schools? No. What I was hearing is that it could significantly impact potentially reach. Or if not reach, then it could negatively impact a regular ed classroom. That's not a good thing at WPS. Nor is it a good thing in our second year of multi-age, multi-grade at Burnham to be negatively impacting the planning time. Again, folks, the planning time when you're doing this is critical. It's not a luxury, it's critical. For it to work, they have to have adequate planning time to make sure they're on the same page, to make sure that those state standards are being met. Otherwise, this experiment is not gonna go as well as we hope it's gonna continue to go. So this is not a luxury. I think this is something that's a necessity. I wouldn't, I wouldn't support any kind of a cut.
Stephanie?
I voted against this last time. I will vote against it again tonight. I also kind of think that we're talking about some of these items erroneously in the sense that we're using something as bargaining chips for other items, where I don't feel like this is a puzzle to be put together because don't feel like this is a puzzle to be put together, because to Pete's point, I feel like we're negotiating with ourselves. We're not negotiating with the public who has given us a number that they want, or a magic percentage that we need to hit. So for us, we're continuing to negotiate within each other to, to try to get a number down that personally, and maybe on principle, I'm just not willing to go any lower than we've already gotten. I think that Julie made a good point in the last meeting, if anyone didn't see it, that maybe we needed to work a little bit harder to let the public understand what this vote was about, and who should really be showing up. I know that there were plenty of families at Booth that didn't vote, so I intend to go and talk to a lot of those families this time around. And I don't think that parents in the district are going to be really happy about us making any more programmatic changes. All of these changes are difficult, and I also think it's a difficult, it, it's a tough thing for people to continue saying that, um, you know, that the further we get down on the, on this list, or cutting an administrator doesn't touch the students, they touch the students in a different way than the teachers do. So, any change we make here is going to affect the students, it's going to affect the building, it's going to affect the region, but because we're here in a place that we don't want to be, we have to make some kind of creative solution, and I think we've done that. I think we've gone as far as we can go, at least personally, that's, that's where I'm at. So I would vote against this, and, you know, we can, I, I'll have comments about the art teacher as well when that pops up.
Any further comments on the, John?
Yeah, I'm just going to give a little historical perspective. Also, my sons went to Washington Primary School. I don't remember them having a para, or an assistant, or a tutor. Especially now with, you know, the class size is shrinking, I just don't see all the assistance in that, the necessity. And, um, if we can't, and I agree with Kathy, perhaps at the, at the mixed grade levels, maybe, maybe an assistant is warranted, but then let's look at, um, reducing the tutors a little bit. And again, this isn't etched in stone. If we try it for a year, and some students still continue to fall through the cracks, we can always get, give them some more assistance, but, uh, let's, you know, I was invited to the Thanksgiving dinner, so I'll take you back to the late 1950s at Parochial School. One nun taught over 30 students. Everything from music to Latin to flipping baseball cards. So, um, you know, I believe that, you know, again. Right, if they, if they didn't perform, but, uh, we got along just fine. Mostly everyone out of our, you know, graduating eighth grade class went into college preparatory at high school. So, again, uh, and there were no tutors in those days.
John.
I, I just have to say this, because, John, prior to you being on the board, you've brought up tutors over and over again. So, your children have been out of the school district for quite a while, so I ask you to, I invite you to at least go into the classrooms, to at least see the importance and the value that they have, excuse me, because I think that that is a really important thing. We're not talking 20 years ago, we're not talking 50 years ago, and I don't think that they're not being used efficiently or effectively, and I think that for you to say that without even being in the classroom, to see how they help the students and the kind of students that they help, is really unfair, because this isn't 25 years ago. This is current. And so I just, and let me finish.
John, let her finish.
Let me finish. So before you make a comment, I ask you to go into the classrooms as a board member and see the value. You may come out feeling exactly the same, but you might not.
Okay. So, can we, can we move on? Well, we are going to be reliving Thursday evening, which we promised we wouldn't do. So, if you have one final thing to say, please make it quick.
I'll accept your challenge, I just can't see what's changed at the elementary level, uh, you know, as far as, as, as the ratio of staff and population.
I'd like to, Pete. So what, now we have to have a two-thirds vote to move to questions? Can we just, if, if there's any other, I just want to vote. Otherwise, we have to get a vote to vote. So all those in favor of eliminating the educational assistance, please raise your hand. All those opposed? All those abstaining?
Anthony?
Jim?
I'd like to make a motion that the board approve a budget with the administrative cut made tonight, with the, with the 1.8% that Bob alluded, whatever the number is. I'm sorry, I didn't write it down. 21,772,852.
Are there's any further discussion? Lisa.
I just wanted to revisit the art teacher.
Okay.
Well, it's come up a, a number of times, and it seems like it's, it's something that just keeps popping its head up, and I guess I'm just confused, so, I know we voted on it, um, but I'd like to have further discussion now that we have the full board here. So, do we just, can we just discuss that?
Anyone who is on the, in the majority of that decision has the right to put it back on the table.
Okay.
So, if that's what you'd like to do, then ask him if he would table his motion for this, or not.
Okay, I'd like to put the motion back on the table.
We have a, a motion that's already on the table.
Oh, so.
Did you vote to eliminate the art position last night?
I did.
You, you, you could move to amend that motion, you could have moved to amend Jim's motion, or you could move.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Jim. Make it simple for us. Go ahead, Lisa. Oh, thank you.
Is that your motion, to restore the art position? Excuse me.
I would like, yes, and then we'll have discussion, correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's my motion.
Is there a second on that motion? Stephanie, is that yes? Okay, so the motion's been seconded. Any comments further? Go ahead, Steph.
Okay, so, obviously, I voted to take this, the art, the .6 art position out of the budget in the last meeting. I was on the fence then, to be fair, I'm on the fence now. Also considering the fact that we've now eliminated a 1.0, like a full FTE administrator position, um, I, I feel like we're stretching on a lot of points. I think we are pulling more out programmatically than we, than I would like to see. I don't know if everyone feels the same way. You know, I, I, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm on the fence about it. We, we had an administrator come up and have to tell us twice, um, how reluctant they were to recommend this being out, and, and I, and I feel that. I, I'm feeling the reluctance. I'm, I'm not sold that this is something that we need to do. I don't know if this is something that, um, is going to make a difference to parents and voters, um, and I don't think anyone wants to see it, so I, I'm interested to hear what other people think.
Lisa.
I feel, um, similar to Stephanie, however, the first time it went up for discussion, I was against it, and then last time when, um, the principal stood up and, and said that this was a redundant position, or there, that's teacher, the third teacher does not have a lot of work. I guess I'm confused, because I didn't hear that the first time. It just said that there wasn't enough students. So, I guess I'm confused, because I don't, I just want to make sure. I agree with what Greg was saying, that artwork is fantastic. I'm a big proponent of the arts, I support the arts, and I just want to make sure that we're not going to regret this next year, or a, a couple of years down the line. So, um, I, I guess I'm on the fence, but I just need some clarity about that position, and, and is it really redundant, or, yeah, I don't know. So, if anybody has an answer.
I think the answer is, uh, Ms. Gallin. I think question I'd, I think the board would like answered as directly as possible is, for the, the example that was brought up, is the teacher in question? The teacher teaches photography, as an example.
I've talked about numbers twice. I've talked about the value of the position twice. I've talked about my reluctance to recommend anyone to be cut from my staff. This is now the third time. I, I, I really am uncomfortable to answer your question for a third time. I am in the unenviable position of now three times recommending a cut that I was asked to recommend, that I was asked to go through the numbers, and I was asked to do my job. But, these are people that work for me, these are people that need to put faith in me, and I just can't tell you three times to cut them. I'm very sorry, I can't make it easier.
Lisa? I mean, you have an opportunity, if, if you want to ask a follow-up question.
Well, I guess, I didn't hear the first time that that teacher really wasn't teaching a lot of students, and maybe, I mean, that's just what I heard last time, which is why I changed my vote. And so, I just didn't hear that the first time, which makes me confused.
I, I can certainly understand that. I, I talked about registration, um, I talked about being asked to examine numbers and to analyze them, and in my analysis of the numbers, registration is low. With the addition of more programming, there will be different things for students to sign up for, um, in, when the ag program comes, um, and I believe that this, that the school could bear that burden. However, all of our art teachers are very valuable. They bring different levels of expertise, they bring different specialties, and I, I just can't, I can't be a principal and keep arguing to cut something.
No, and I'm sorry to put you in that position. We're just trying, we're just trying. I know, and I apologize that, I'm asking you for a third time. I'm, I'm uncomfortable about this position, and I just want to make sure we do the right thing. So, I apologize for putting you in that position, but I'm just trying to understand and do the best thing, because when I went into this, I really didn't want to cut anything to do with the kids. So, that's where I am.
You already have.
I understand that, but.
You already have.
We're a school, so everything we do has to do with the kids, so.
None, none of this is, is easy, and I know you're not saying that it is, and, and, um, I can't continue to be a principal and argue repeatedly to cut my staff.
I understand that.
I, I just can't, I'm sorry.
Now, once again, I think we have to, to, to read between the lines here, and, and I think it's a matter of, um, the numbers are obviously defensible, and I think that's what gave, um, Kim courage in the first place to be able to defend it twice. But numbers and, um, it's like quality and quantity are two different things. Art is not just one thing that we can spread out and we fit enough kids in the classroom and the numbers work. It's, it's a lot of different things. There's, there's watercolor and sculpture and, and wirework and, and charcoal and digital photography and, and regular photography. And all of those, as I said before, are, um, aspects of an education, which we need to make sure that we are availing our children of. If we really wanted to, we could have one art teacher and slam all the kids into that class, and they'd have a couple of weeks of everything as this, as the year went by. But that's not what we're about, and, and we exhibit these things in, in the hallways, not just to have something to cover our walls, but to show how we are succeeding at offering, um, varieties of artistic discipline to children, who can then find where they are, where they have mastery. And I, I think this is the hard thing, because what we've done, what I did to two principals, and what you've done to another principal, is you forced them to be like someone in a battlefield, saying, "Look, we're really running out of money here. Can you fight with one gun and not two?" They're like, "Sure." They're not going to say, "No." "Can you fight without armor, because we just don't have the funds?" They're going to say, "Yes, we will defend our fort with that." But they don't want to say, "No, I can't." They will never say that. So we've put them on the spot, and they've been very good to express to us how, if you really want to like, slice off one of our arms at the shoulder, we will still principal these schools one-armed. But they don't want to say that, because they would rather that we think about what we're actually here for, which is to come up with a budget that we will get people to vote yes on. And what will help me sleep at night is if we have a budget that has, at this point, changed things as far as the administrative costs, and not touched programmatic, or staff, or technical, or infrastructure, or maintenance, um, costs, because then we have people who really were beating the drum, perhaps these 32 people who voted no, beating the drum for administrative, uh, uh, changes. They will be satisfied, but then we won't begin to start alienating other people who are like, "Wait a second, now you, you, you cut art, you cut this, you cut that." We could have a whole bunch of new no votes in the, in our next, uh, referendum. So I really feel that it's important that we, we make our point, as, as, as Pete was saying before, you know, what is our bottom line? My bottom line is not a number, it's, um, it's the, the, it's the first, uh, um, reduction in superintendent's salary, and the reduction in the administrator, which we've already done, that make this a purely administrative change, which I think is a very, um, big change, and also one that we can, I hate to say this, market well, and also that one will, no one will be able to accuse us of folding based on pressure from outside forces that influenced our, um, the way we, uh, offer an education to our children.
John.
So I'm just going to be consistent across the board tonight, since I'm on a roll. But, um, again, I think that, you know, for me to say, I, I, I mean, I think losing, cutting an administrative position is, is just as important tonight, even though you, you call it like, it's as if it's a sacrificial lamb in some ways, it's still important, it's still part of the structure, and again, we need to be sensitive to that, because, just because we're offering it up for the 32 votes, it's still important and valuable, and I just feel like I need to keep saying that. On the other side, and I appreciate Kim so much, how you, the difficult position that you're in, and this is how I felt the first time, and I'm just going to hold to it, since I'm, so I'm going to be consistent across the board. You know, we're becoming a STEM school, and I don't want to lose the art, and I, I feel really important that we hold on to it, and I'm just going to put on my positive pants and believe that we're going to, you know, really be creative and allow there to be an opportunity to offer a lot of classes, because I think once we cut that, it's going to be really hard to bring it back in. And so, for me, just on that alone, I'm not, um, in favor of cutting the art program, because I think it's really important that we stay heavy and strong and supportive in the arts in this school. It makes us really, for me, unique and special, and I think I want to be more mindful of that as we move forward in, in STEM. So, that's where I stand.
Michael. Thank you, John. Michael.
I agree with, um, Jen, I think that this would be a very painful cut to live with, and, um, uh, Kim, I have two simple questions that I think will help illustrate how painful it would be. Question number one is, from my, to my knowledge, the art department is already small, this cut would mean that it would be even smaller, correct?
Uh-huh.
Going from three, going from three to two?
That would be a.
It's not a trick question.
It'd be less.
Going from three to two.
I'm trying here, Mike. I'm really not sure why you're saying that.
No. I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying it to try to illustrate Jen's point that if you're making a cut in a department of 10, it's painful. If you're making a cut in a department of three, i- it's even more devastating. So I think, and I also think, I agree with Jen, that it sends the message that maybe we don't care about the arts as much. Maybe it's all about STEM in this new, in this new school that we're building, and I strongly reject that idea. I believe that the administration strongly reject, would reject that idea, and I think as a board, we need to support the arts as much as we support science and math here at Chapag. So that's one problem that I have with it. Another problem is, I think for you to get it to work would require some programmatic changes, or some class combining that might be awkward for students. In other words, I'm thinking that you might be forced to take, um, Drawing and Painting 1 and combine it with Drawing and Painting 2.
We do that now.
You do that now? Would you have to do more of that with a cut?
We're a small school, we do it all over the place. I, I really, I can't help you with that one.
Okay.
We, we do a lot of combining to make it work.
So you're not sure, you're not sure what kinds of changes you'd have to make if that cut went through?
We could handle all of the classes that we hold now.
Right.
Whether we have three or two.
I'm just wondering if it would make, um, a situation that might be uncomfortable even worse, from your perspective, as far as delivering the curriculum? Is that a safe statement to say?
Sure, that's a safe statement.
Okay.
Greg.
Which is the artistic specialty we're going to lose if this cut goes through?
That simply isn't true, Greg. Our, our teachers are.
Which is the person that you're going to have to cut? What is their specialty?
I'm not going to say that, I'm sorry. This is, I, I'm not going to say that person's name, I'm sorry.
Well, I think, well, I'm not going to ask you for their name, I'm not concerned about the name so much, as I'm trying to figure out, you know, arts are a little bit different than certain other area, subject matters, uh, i- in that, in that there, there are very many particular mediums, and the fewer art teachers you have, the less opportunity to have different mediums. have different medium, media represented in a given thing, and one would have to be idealistic to expect that one teacher can adequate, as adequately cover multiple areas as, as can people, if you have more people in different specialties. For example, you've got photography and you've got, you know, you've got painting, and they're two very different areas, and we are in a very artistic community. I have many, many paintings, probably more than a dozen hanging in my living room, everyone by a different Roxbury artist, and that's just Roxbury. There are a lot of artists in these communities, and we have a lot going on in the art, and it would be idealistic in the extreme to think that, that two people could cover the fields as well as three people could cover the fields, and, you know, it kind of reminds me of that, of that great quote by H.L. Mencken, who said, "An idealist is one who upon noticing roses smell better than cabbage concludes it will also make a better soup." And therein lies the problem. I think we diminish the program in the arts when we start taking out people who cover certain areas. It would be like expecting the same person to teach choral music, band, and string orchestra. It's a nice idea, could it be done? Will the teachers pitch in and do it? Have they been trained to teach multiple areas? You bet, but it ain't going to happen, you're not going to get results. Not the kind of results I see out there in that mall, which are, which are nothing short of spectacular for high school students. And so, I'm really afraid, this money's got to go back in the budget.
Can I just ask you, can I just ask you to remember that if I identify those specialties, I am throwing teachers that will remain on my staff under the bus, and I'm not comfortable with doing that.
Well, no, but it's sufficient for me
I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I'm just telling you, I'm not going to do that.
But it's sufficient for me to know that you will be eliminating a specialty area, because I'm presuming your art, your art teachers have different areas with, that they are big in, so you're going to be eliminating one of those areas if you eliminate a person.
I think the, is it fair to say the answer to that is yes?
Fair to say that Greg has made a good point. I'm not going to answer it, I'm sorry.
That's fair, okay. Let's move on. Michelle?
I'm trying.
All right. It's interesting, I find myself in a new position for me, but I'm, I am going to speak in favor of cutting the position, because our, our student population and schedule don't support it. It's unfortunate, but our art, and I'm, I love the arts, I'm a supporter of the arts. Our art department will be staffed similarly to our music department, which is also staffed similarly to our PE department. We are getting smaller, we have smaller numbers of student, if the student enrollment doesn't support that, it's hard for me to think that we would cut an entire administrator when we don't have enough students sitting in the seats to support, to support that position. So, I don't like to do that, I don't, but, but the numbers say that, the numbers don't support that position at this point in time. If in the future, when the schedule changes and all of a sudden, for some reason, we have a huge increase in art or a huge increase in music, we'll have to adjust for that, and it's a little bit unknown right now exactly how, with the schedule changes and the students coming in, what exactly the elective schedule will look like. So, I think it, it doesn't make sense to, to try to predict that when the current students that we have don't, don't support this. And I also think that we need to treat all of our teachers as the professionals that they are, and our math teachers are certified for math, and they might be teaching geometry one year, and they might be teaching trig another year, and they have to bone up on that if that's what they need to do over the summer. And we actually have a lot of faculty, or teachers in this building that have to teach three or four different classes. They have, they have to be sharp on all of their maths or all of their sciences, because that's just how we are, we're small. So, I, I, this is the third time we've spoken about this. It was made clear to us that the students aren't there, it is not about the person, it is about the fact that our students have not signed up for this class, those, we would be trying to fill a schedule. We've made sacrifices in so many places, I think, trying to save something because we love the arts, which, which obviously we do, but just because it seems, it feels better. When the students aren't there, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense, so.
Pete?
I think the board members have to be careful. What are you going to do if the budget gets defeated and somebody walks in the room and says, "By the way, raise the budget. We just defeated the budget. You know why? You cut out something we don't like. The budget's too low. What are you doing?" Did you ever think about that? Did you ever think that hasn't happened before? To get this in your head that you got a number that you got to drop it to because 20 or 30 votes defeated the budget? I think the board has to be very careful in thinking that you just can't keep massaging reduction without worrying about the fact that you'll find people, and it's happened before, because I've been on the board for 14 years, a group of people will walk in and say, "By the way, raise the budget, we're not happy," and there you are, and you're stuck in a real difficult position. And that's what, I think the point is you can cut too much. Sometimes you have to give. Maybe Michelle is right, I don't know, maybe the principal is right, but there's a point that you're going to get to, and you're going to lose the budget by people who want stuff in it.
Ellen?
I just want to say briefly that I don't think it's a, it's a numbers issue. I don't think you can say that we don't have the numbers for this extra art teacher, because it doesn't have to do with numbers. I don't think it's a matter of they're not, kids aren't signing up for it, I think it's a matter of what we're offering the kids. So, and being able to, you know, be certified in art and teach a few disciplines is different than having, I mean, it's art, it's not like it's math. Math is a science, and art is art. So, it's, I just don't think we can take this as a numerical argument in this case. It doesn't have, do as much as filling the seats, it has more to do with fulfilling the requirements of being able to offer a full-fledged artistic education.
Ready for, John?
I will not support a cut in the art department. You know, we have to be reminded that for a lot of students, art and music is a, is a creative, you know, chance to, to express themselves individually. A lot of students, you know, find that they can excel in something, and it's a, it's definitely a, an alternative to the core curriculum, and, you know, and again, thinking about my own sons in, in high school, students need an alternative.
I think we've come around the table here, so unless somebody has a comment, we feel is, hasn't been said already or is material, I'd suggest we move to vote, but is there anyone who would like to add anything else at this point? Greg?
I just wanted to thank John for making that point. I have one child who graduated from Chapag, went to Region 12, kindergarten through 12th grade, and is now supporting herself entirely in the arts, and so I think it's important. And I'll just leave you with this, there's a very, another very famous quote that I have to pull out of my arsenal of quotes, it was attributed to Winston Churchill, and it was that, was asked by the Chancellor of the Exchequer, "Well, we have to cut all the funding we have in order to be able to defend this country in the darkest days of World War II," and he suggested that they cut funding for the arts as a means of acquiring more, more shields against the bombs coming in from Nazi Germany. And Churchill was alleged to have responded, "My God, man, what do you think we're fighting for?" And, and the only thing is that Churchill never said it, but it doesn't mean it doesn't have great weight. And I know that there are a lot of things we, we don't want to cut, and one thing we do not want to cut is that which makes life worth living, and it's what we are fighting for, and I'll leave you with that, sorry.
All right, so with that, motion's on the floor to, Jim? Sorry, I didn't see, I didn't see your finger there.
That's right, I just put it up. I mean, I just want to say, we are not eliminating the arts. We're not cutting off somebody's arm who's fighting in a war. We're not putting all our students in one art class. The principal has told us that you don't have the coverage need for three teachers, that the system can be adequately met with two teachers. So, I mean, I don't think, you know, we're not eliminating the arts here. There's a motion to restore this to the, to the budget, this position. I'm going to vote against that. I think that, you know, the board has come a long way with this budget, we're trying to present a responsible budget. We're not voting to get to a number, the vote, I mean, from, speaking for myself, the board is trying to present as reasonable a budget as it can to the towns, and it seems to me that this is a reasonable cut under the circumstances, so.
All right, so with that, the motion is on the floor to restore the art teacher. So, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those abstain? Motion passes? Hmm? Okay. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Okay. Motion passes? We should be at about 1.98%, but Bob?
Go ahead.
Tell us. Well, I was filling in the gap while you got your microphone.
21,811,407, 1.98.
1.98. Thank you, Bob. Okay. Michelle?
I just want to make a comment regarding something Pete said, but it wasn't germane to that last motion, which is why I waited. Because Pete, I've often struggled with the, with the vote. You know, you look at the numbers, you parse them out, you look at each town, you look at the yes, you look at the no, and you try to figure out what that vote is telling you. And we don't always know. We often know that there are parents who are angry about something that we've cut, and they come and fill our room telling us that, and will vote down a budget knowing that the budget's going to get reduced and there's no way to restore what they were so angry about. So, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a difficult challenge, but what we did hear very clearly this time around was the displeasure at the Mount from Roxbury. Their Board of Finance, their first select woman, very loud and clear. So, we, so we do know that they have an issue with this number, and all I can say is that if people don't want us to cut this budget, then they need to come out and support it because they didn't before. So, it, the, not in my history have we ever come back with more money. So, if that is the plan, that, if that is what people want, they need to come and speak with us during the budget development. So, we need to make sure that everyone who supports, who does not want to see it get cut again, comes out and votes for the budget. The other thing I wanted to just say is that it, it costs the towns money to hold these budget votes, it takes a lot of time to have these votes, so we don't want to dismiss, come back with a number that is so similar to the original one that we get the exact same result. We need to all do our work, we need to educate the people about this, and not waste the towns' money and time holding multiple budget votes. So, I think that's, I think it's important, we've made some significant cuts, hopefully it's enough to keep the, for the people who were upset, and for those who felt that we shouldn't have cut it in the first place, they should have shown up and voted the first time, and I hope that they come and vote this time.
Vote.
I just wanted to remind everybody on the board, and maybe this is obvious, but it's not the parents that vote down a budget, because the number of parents in our regions are a tiny, tiny little subset of the voters, and it's actually the seniors who have the time and the numbers. So, I would encourage all of us to reach way beyond the parents. I mean, sure, the parents are a given, we've got to get them out, but please, reach way beyond them, because it's really the others with no kids in the system, and, sorry Pete, but most of them just think we're too small to support a big budget. They're not going to come vote against it because they think, you know, we cut too much. So, I just hope we'll all really work hard to get people out next time, so we don't have to come up here for two or three more nights and go through this again.
All right, thank you. All right, so, let's, let's move, move along here. So, do I have a motion to approve a budget of 21,811,407?
I think you're, there are a couple items on here that I didn't get a satisfactory answer, got a satisfactory answer from, from the meeting the other night, and I didn't hear these fully discussed, I heard them discussed
But Greg, that's, but Greg, that is why, that is why I asked to look at the video and not rehash Thursday evening for, you know...
Well, but I do want to respond to something. Jen, I would have been here if the meeting hadn't been scheduled over something else that had a, that had a predetermined place I had to be, that I committed to. It was a special meeting, it was not on a regular night, it was on an off night, it was on the wrong night, and it was on a night that I said I couldn't be there, and, and the meeting was chose to be held. So, I think I have the right to ask questions that you didn't really fully discuss in that meeting, and I think it's really, it's kind of obnoxious to suggest that people shouldn't ask questions. This is a budget that's going to affect almost 700 children very acutely, in addition to hundreds of staff members, very acutely, and I think we shouldn't be rushing out of here to get to a vote because you've decided we've cut enough. Maybe we haven't cut enough. I'll tell you one thing, I don't want to see it go down a second time, because then you're voting in July, and that's after your parents have left, go on vacation, and you may not get the budget through in July, and we may be sitting here with another vote in August, and another vote in September. Believe me, there are towns in this state that have taken 10 or 12 votes.
Greg, cut to the chase, what else do you want to talk about?
The question I wanted to ask about is there a reason why the items in number five cannot be postponed a year? Is there a reason why? Or, or another way found to pay for those? That's what I didn't hear. I didn't hear why these are so acute they need to be in here this year.
I think, well, Michelle, it falls in the category of nothing on this list, everything on this list is potential to be cut. And when we talked about this on Thursday, we looked at these things and said, "This is not going to make or break this budget," and, and these are things that, that the school feels they need to continue providing an enriched program. So, you know, there are things on here that the baseball, we got, we had a baseball team who's out there competing to win the states, and we want to, we want to take out $960. I mean, talk about being on austerity, so
I'll put it this way, that, that's not going to help them this year, that's coming next year. So, it's not going to help them this year.
That's not the point. So, Michelle?
Well, I would just say, Greg, it's kind of like the facilities. You defer it this year, and it just is twice as much next year. The administration says these things are, I don't know, the sacred goals could be a safety hazard for all I know. All I know is that they put them on the list and, or they, they didn't rank them at the top of things to be cut. So, if we don't buy them this year, we're going to need to buy them next year, and for the $17,000, it seemed we shouldn't defer these items.
Yeah, but there's a difference. Next year, you may not have, I just want to remind you what Roxbury's position is. Last year, Roxbury got hit with about a $500,000 increase based on the allocation of the number of students. Roxbury basically saved the budget that went down in Bridgewater and Washington, okay? So, Roxbury, even though they were getting hit with half a million, voted to save the budget. This year, they got hit with another, originally it was $600,000 this year. So, what you have to understand is, is they're not, you don't have, you don't have the government to
Pete, this is the time to call the question. I'd like to call the question, please.
Well, that may be, but I would really appreciate it, Mr. Chairman, if you would please allow the person speaking to finish. I'm trying to tell you that, having been hit with it again, it's not a trivial matter that the government of Roxbury, that the town leaders are vocally opposed to the budget, okay? You have to be realistic. Next year, when you're adding in $17,000 worth of equipment, if the equipment can make it another year, that may be a year in which you don't have the reallocation thing hitting a town so hard that people are out actively campaigning against a budget. That's what you have to do, and I think that, I can't, I can't with a straight face and with a good conscience go in and talk to them and say, "You need to support this budget." If I haven't tried to cut everything possible out of it, and I don't think the administration would have put this on the table if they didn't think it could be done, and I don't know whether the superintendent can enlighten us as to why these items were put on the table and what's about it, but I at least don't want to say, if I'm asked, "Did you ask about these?", I don't want to say, "Well, no, I didn't bother," because it wouldn't make or break the budget.
Good answer. I think when the administrative team prioritize the possible cuts for next, for this this year in the budget, we felt that we would put at the top of the list things that won't impact the kids and things that we don't have already. So if you don't have it, you can't really lose it, so it doesn't have an impact. So that's kind of why some of the things were, were organized that way. As far as number five goes, I, you know, every year, people ask for program improvements, and that's how you keep things moving. I, it was mentioned at the last meeting that possibly we have money at the end of the year to buy these things. That's a possibility. Can we do without them? Absolutely. But, you know, it is a small amount. Hopefully, depending on the end of the year, we will be able to purchase them. But I don't see it as a, 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 very hurtful or upsetting to the district that we can't move on if, if that was taken out of the budget at this time.
Any other comments on this line item? Greg?
I move that we accept proposed reduction number five.
We have a motion on the table, and I am calling the question.
All right. Well, then, if that's the case.
Because when you call a question, it's when one person thinks that his time is being wasted, and then the board votes in a majority or minority whether that person is right or not.
Mr. Chairman, do I have the floor, or do I not have the floor?
I called the question.
Do I have the floor, Mr. Chairman?
You have the floor.
If I have the floor, then I will propose it as an, I will propose to substitute this motion for the motion that's on the table to approve the budget. I move to substitute it.
There's no second. There's no second on that motion.
To eliminate the, the items in number five from the budget.
To accept proposed cut, to, to accept proposed reduction number five. All right. Seventeen thousand, four hundred and ninety-four.
There was no, there was no second on that motion.
I'm, I'm sorry, but you can't have a motion after a motion which hasn't been voted on, and I've called the question for that motion.
You didn't have the floor when you called the question.
You don't need to have the floor to call the question. The call to question interrupts a, a, a board member who does not...
Well, you want to take a vote on calling the question? Suppose you could take a vote on calling the question?
That's, that's what we do. That's why we call the question.
We do. He's right. Alan's right. So, we're going to call the question. Remember, we need a two-thirds vote? To vote on the motion that was on the table.
To, yeah. To be clear, what I'm calling is the motion was on the table, which is to accept the budget for twenty-one million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and seven dollars.
That's correct. Okay.
Who seconded that?
Michelle?
What do you have, Madam?
No, you moved, you moved the original motion. You're correct.
Motion to accept the budget, the one before my motion.
I'm looking around. Did anybody second? Michael?
No, it's too late. You can't, you can't, you can't procedurally go to second it now.
Did somebody originally second?
No one seconded it.
Sue?
It did not have a second. It wasn't properly on the floor. The motion to, the motion to call the question is out of order, and I'm proceeding on my motion.
Greg, Greg, hold on for a minute. I'd like to hear from Sue. Do you have anything in the minutes that there was a second on that motion? My motion? I was actually, Michelle, but that's okay. Did anybody second Alan's motion, as far as you know? My motion was seconded.
Why don't you let Greg go?
You moved to question.
No, 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 no. Wait. Who, there was a motion.
To vote.
On this budget. Who made that motion?
I did.
Who seconded it?
Michelle.
Michelle. Calling the question does not require a second.
So we have a motion and a second. No, we need, what we need to know, we need to vote on the calling the question.
All in motion.
Which means we need a two-thirds vote to decide whether we need to move directly without any more discussion to voting on the motion that Anthony made and Michelle seconded it.
All right. All those in favor on the, the call to question, raise your hand. Call to question means to vote on the budget.
Jen, so we can vote.
You're opposed, Michelle. Be clear.
Okay. All right. So we're back to the original motion was to vote on the budget. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed?
No, I'm sorry. I like, I, I am in favor. I get so excited.
Greg and John, two no votes. All those abstain? Motion passes to adopt the annual budget of twenty-one million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, four oh seven. All right. Next item is to call a district meeting for the date of June 4th, 2018, with a possible referendum date of June 5th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
What?
I'm sorry?
You're going to have discussion, or are you just going to?
You're all right. I'm getting anxious, Greg. Go ahead.
All right. I just want to make one observation. In order to call the question, a member must have the floor. Mr. Brown did not have the floor. I therefore ask for a move from the chair as parliamentarian as to whether the previous motion was improperly voted on to call the question because Mr. Brown did not have the floor. He interrupted me. Unlike what he said, you do not just get to shout it out and interrupt the speaker. You must be recognized.
You are quoting from?
Robert's Rules of Order.
No. I didn't. No, I didn't. And you're, I'm sorry, Greg, again, you're quoting from Robert's Rules?
Yep.
So where do you want to go, Greg?
Do you really care this much that you want to fight for $17,000 as opposed to just moving with this budget we just voted on and getting on with it?
I made a motion because I wanted to see a vote on that motion. I wanted to have the opportunity to vote on that motion.
And that motion?
I made the motion. I made, probably won't pass.
And...
The motion was made after the budget motion was already adopted.
Yeah, and I have not, to go back, I have not withdrawn that motion. So, but I will withdraw that motion. We're, you know, Greg pointed out a point of order, and he's right. Alan didn't have a floor. So we're back to where we were. I had a motion on the table. I will withdraw that motion and yield to Greg's motion to vote on item five, programmatic changes. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of, of adopting that and removing those line items from the budget, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Alan, Alan, just vote. Just vote, please. Are you, are you against removing item five from the budget? Okay. Do you have it? All those abstain? Okay. Motion fails. Greg and John. Motion fails. Are there any further motions regarding the line items on this sheet? If not, I'd like to put a motion on the table that the board adopted the annual budget of twenty-one million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, four oh seven. No. No, no. Greg is pointing out that the whole dynamic that got us here was out of order.
Okay.
And I'm not going to argue with the quote from Robert's Rules, so we, we just take it from the top.
Done.
So the motion on the floor, as stated, was passed the budget of twenty-one, eight hundred and eleven thousand, four oh seven.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Now we'll go back. Do I have a motion to call a district meeting on June 4th, 2018, and a possible referendum date for June 5th, 2018? Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. To put, ask for one further motion from the, from the board, and that is to open the polls from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Thank you. Any further discussion, Jim? Yes, I have.
Can you tell us by who? Because we were previously asked to move it from 6:00 AM to 12:00 noon because there was very light traffic and they had to, they had to sit there all day. I'm sorry. So if somebody's asked you to do, then that's fine.
Superintendent has asked, has asked that the polls remain open. And then, and you want to elaborate on the source of that?
Please.
Please.
Because I know it wasn't, it didn't originate with you.
Thank you. A board member came and asked about it at Thursday's meeting. We checked the state statutes. The Board of Education sets the times. Today, we called the select people from each town. Barbara Henry is absolutely in favor and feels that a lot of her townspeople want to go before work. Mark Lyons could go either way, but did not want to inhibit anybody in Roxbury. So he said he would support that decision. And Curtis Reed did not support the decision. He wants to keep it 12 to 8. So that's where he stands.
Any further, Julie?
No, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Well, it does cost significantly more to open it all day, for one, and for two, it does take away our consistency, which we've done it from 12 to 8 now for at least a couple of years. And third, that particular day is very difficult. It just happens to be a very difficult day for the registrars in the town of Bridgewater. So it is going to be a difficult resource constraint for them to be there all day. So I just thought I'd point that out.
Thank you.
I, I really think we can get enough people to come and have parents go after work. That's my personal opinion.
Any other comments? Michelle?
I did hear from at least three, maybe four people that, that they felt that it should have been opened from 6 to 8, and a couple of people who went in the morning and were not able to vote. It's a challenge. I, I almost wish we could have a morning and a, an evening to try to make it cost less and not be such a burden, but I, I don't, apparently, that has not been done before. So I don't know what the rules are about that. But I did hear from quite a few people that they, they were not able to vote because it was 12 to 8.
Any other comments? If not, all those in favor of opening the polls from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, please raise
I don't think there was a motion made. Was there a motion?
There was a motion made, and it was seconded.
I did second.
Okay, fine. I, I'm sorry. I'm in favor of the motion.
We always just give you the second if you also moved.
All right. All those opposed? Raise your hand. The motion passes. Thank you. All right. At this point, we're going to move into our educational meeting and invite comments from the public. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda items pass, and we'll move on to reports and recognition. At this point, I'm rather exhausted and don't have much to say. But in all seriousness, I do want to thank the board for the, the debate, the deliberations, the thoughtfulness that went into these last few nights in discussing the budget. It's not trivial. We all know it's not trivial. It's probably one of the most difficult things to grapple with. And especially, a thank you to the administration staff who've had to stand up in front of us and answer some pretty tough questions. Not easy. We know it. But we appreciate it because your answers do matter, and we do try to take these things into account. And I know I'm speaking for the board, but I hope you'll indulge my liberties in speaking on behalf of the board in this way. So with that, let's get the budget passed so we don't need to go back and, and do this again. With that, Pat?
Yes, I'll be quick because we have a student back there with Teresa. We have announced today the Teacher of the Year, and it is Lisa Holmes at Shippag Valley School. So we're very excited. You will meet her on June 4th. So we're excited about that. I also want to congratulate the... Clap, yeah. She's a special educator and really deserves it. Just wonderful. We have the boys' baseball team. I have to mention it. They won, lost this year, and they won the Berkshire League last week and going to the States. So we're excited about that. I also, I just want to give the board an update. We, when you made the motion, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, about the lost days this year, we are still okay. So our students have 180 days. Their last day will be June 22nd. All graduations are on as scheduled. The staff, certified staff owe us three days. Some of them have already worked two of those days in spring break and will work a day in the week of June 25th. Some are working three days that week. So unlike other districts where they are really in dire straits and trying to get dispensation for those 180 days from the commissioner, we are in very good shape. So I just want to let you know, and the staff has been wonderful trying to work to make these disruptions as, as smooth as possible. Reduction in force, Sarah Fiola in the elementary school, at, right now, she's a reduction in force only because we're waiting to see what happens with the budget. Samantha Dombrowski is the math teacher that we, we reduce this year in this budget. So, you know, we have made cuts. There are many cuts in this budget. We do have a resignation, Ingrid Erickson, who is the school psychologist, who is a retiree who came out of retirement. She's done a great job, so we will miss her. And with that said, oh, and, yes, and Mr. Freezo Hermans is signed for the physics job. So he is returning next year. We're very excited about that. And he just signed his contract on Friday, so he'll be on the next list. So we're excited about that. And, yeah, so now Teresa DeBrito and her lovely students, who I vacation with. Oh, we have to take a five-minute break. Okay.
Fast. We'll take it fast. Sorry.
Five-minute break so we can... All right. We are back. If you could, please take your seats.
Thank you, Bob.
Good night, Bob. Alan? Greg, please?
Floor's yours. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to flip a little bit of what I have for you this evening. Wanted to focus on some instructional updates, but I'm going to bring your attention to what is at the bottom of your cover sheet, the Rocket Book Wave. It's a pilot that we've been doing in eighth-grade math class. And the reason I'm shifting is because we have a really enthusiastic student who has been here patiently waiting with her dad... student who has been here patiently waiting with her dad. And so we're very grateful. And I offered to read what she had prepared, but she was determined to share herself. So I really would like to turn the floor over to Ms. Harlequin Sullivan.
Hello. So I'm an eighth grader here at Chapag. And I want to talk to you about the Rocket Notebooks that we've had in our math class. And to introduce the tool, I want to give you some background information of why we got them. So Mr. DeBrito periodically comes into our math class. And during one of the classes, we were going over the homework when one student was asked how he got the answer. He said he did not have all the work. So the next time she came in, she referred to the situation and asked us if we would like to try the Rocket Notebooks. So we would have a place for our notes. That would be very easily accessible. So many of us said yes. Personally, in my own opinion, I really like the Rocket Notebooks. I like how sturdy it is and how in some notebooks, the pages will just like fall, fall out. But the Rocket Notebook is tough and the pages won't fall out. I also like how, like I said, easily accessible the notes you take are. In most notebooks, after you fill it up, you'll have to buy a new one and then keep track of the old notebook. But in the Rocket Notebook, you can import all your notes into your Google Drive, and then you just microwave it and it becomes clean again. I also enjoyed how there's a slot for the pen because most pens, I will lose them. And then I have to buy more. Well, in this one, there's an easy place for you to just put the pen where you won't lose it and it doesn't come off. Like I said, I just really like the Rocket Notebook and its functionalities, and I just really liked it.
They want to see it. It's called the Wave. And Harlequin, Harlequin will pass it around. And I just want to share, the kids apparently were so excited. One student went home and told her grandmother, and her grandmother went out and bought one. So, yes. So we're, we are piloting it. And so students can fill it completely, as Harlequin explained. And then there is this trick where you put it in the microwave and all your notes are erased and you just use it again. And you've uploaded everything, so you don't have to worry about where you put that notebook. You can always refer back to it. So I tried to use this instrument to engage the kids and get them excited about taking notes, right? That's, we didn't want to lose all of the work that they put into completing their assignments as well for mathematics. So we are piloting it in that particular classroom. Questions?
All right, I'm sorry. I, I am not very techy, but how did the notes get into the Google Drive?
This, QR codes.
Oh, so you like take a picture? You scan?
You scan it with your phone, and then it goes, and you send it to your Google Drive, and then it's pulled up.
Wow, I would need written out directions. That's cool, though. Thank you. Wow, it's got a QR code. So it sends it in.
And this does go along with Focus 10 of our goals. So I wanted to share this with you. I think you all want one, it seems, for yourselves. Thank you, Harlequin. When I went into class and asked if anyone wanted to share, there were students volunteering, but Harlequin's enthusiasm just stole the show. And I was like, okay, you are the spokesperson for the class. So going back to the start here of what I'm going to be sharing, Project Lift and Gifted Education. At the last Board of Ed meeting, the business meeting, I shared on behalf of the Education Subcommittee, the UConn partnership that we have. And that was just a reporting out from the committee. There's a private meeting going on here to the left. You all might want to step into the mall. They all want one. So within your packet, if you turn the page, you will see a description of the Learning Informs Focus Teaching Project. And I wanted you to see the four main goals. Really is about helping teachers identify indicative behaviors of high potential in primary grades. And also to promote teacher capacity to support advanced level learning. And through instructional approaches, emphasize discourse and higher level thinking. And the fourth goal is really to offer professional development, not only to the teachers that will get it initially from UConn, but to share it with others as the years progress. The next page has the actual letter that went to families, was mailed home. The four goals are identified in the letter. It is signed by myself and both elementary school principals. And parents have the option not to have any information about their child shared. Keeping in mind that there is no information that is identifiable. So the information that would be shared would be, for example, student A and some of the demographic results about student A and student B and student C. So there's no manner in which anyone from UConn would know what student is described in the demographic information that is shared. But we absolutely needed to get parent involvement and give them the opportunity to opt their child out. So those particular forms that were included in the letter, in the envelope with the letter are also attached. The next three pages provide very specific information from the university. So a parent could reach out to me, a parent could reach out to a building administrator, a parent could reach out directly to Dr. Catherine Little at UConn to ask more specific questions. So we did give them all the information we had and transparency in regard to this project. We are hopeful that the techniques that teachers will learn about will be impactful, that they will see a difference in their own practice that will benefit students. Continuing, under Gifted Education, we are also going to offer a new assessment, which is called the Torrance Test of Creative Thinking to screen giftedness. We certainly have academic assessments that we use, but this assessment will be a new assessment. And so we are looking at purchasing information regarding this assessment and having students also take this assessment. There's a page in your packet that provides some highlights for the Torrance Test. Yes.
Just briefly, Teresa, for Project Lift, I know it's targeted at two of our schools and.
Correct.
Grades one through three.
One through three.
How would you anticipate our participation in Project Lift benefiting other grades or other schools?
So this is very specific to younger students because there are behaviors that sometimes we don't realize actually are an indicator that the student does have a higher intelligence or a greater capacity. And so it is an opportunity to help teachers extend that understanding. And then the teachers who are not a part of it will be brought in at the end of year two so that they also can get that professional development. But it is specifically geared towards the young students.
As board members that are not aware, what's the advantage of early identification of gifted students?
Absolutely. So anytime that we do have students that show giftedness, which we have had, in particular academically, we will accelerate them in their grade. So we have done that in the past. So we absolutely want to make sure that the instruction that is offered matches and challenges the students' own talents and skills. And you'll notice that this is funded by the Javits Gifted and Talented Students Education Program through the U.S. Department of Education. And it's not costing us a penny. Yes.
How long is the research going to be continued for?
Two years. Yes. The other piece of information I wanted to share with you is regarding the high school transcript. Beginning with the incoming freshman class, we will now have on a high school transcript the actual courses that are high school equivalent, for example, mathematics or world language. And a student who successfully completes those courses will receive high school credit, and it will show up on the transcript. So currently, it'll have the school year, and a college can look to see, oh, this was freshman year, sophomore year, junior and senior. But it will also have the year before high school with those courses and those grades so that it becomes very explicit to the college that the student took it prior to high school and what that grade was.
Just a question. Is it automatically on the transcript, or can you request to have it on the transcript?
It's going to be automatic.
So, and they were notified the eighth grade were?
This is what we're doing right now.
Not right now. Because I guess that would be helpful to know prior, like the year prior, otherwise, because it might be something you don't want on your eighth grader's transcript that, right? So I don't know how that, I think there are some people that are questioning that, and I think it's a valid concern.
So you're saying if a student happened to take a world language or whichever course.
Yeah, and they didn't do well.
Quite as well. Well, I think that'll be a point for discussion.
Because I think that that's a concern that I'm hearing from a lot of parents.
We will have to go back and look at that. Because typically, the courses are going to be coded a certain way so that that grade automatically will appear. But we will have to look at whether it becomes an optional aspect of it. So we will talk as a team.
Yeah, because I think that that's going to be, I, I don't know if you will, but I'm thinking that a lot of parents are kind of.
Sure.
Saying, well, you know, we were thinking that this would start next year and realizing that that's when, you know.
Right.
It's going to be taken a little bit more seriously in terms of transcripts. So I think that that's something that should be.
Good point. Thank you.
Disgusting.
We'll have to talk about that.
So, so classes that are taken in eighth grade.
That are equivalent to high school course.
High school, so like algebra or.
Exactly.
Or Spanish, French one, whatever.
Exactly.
You'll get credit for those as well?
Yes.
That'll count towards your high school graduation?
Correct.
Are there more? It's just interesting, I'm just sort of thinking through. It kind of opens up the schedule a little bit, which is kind of, is nice. It's interesting that I feel like there are a lot of students in the school who've done, who have done that, but.
You know, we have found that students who, who do well, take advanced courses in middle school, don't stop when they're juniors. They want to take APs in that same discipline. So especially for math in particular. But this could potentially offer opportunities to take other things, certainly.
Okay. Because it, I guess if it's algebra one, the college, let's say for colleges are looking for four years of math.
Correct.
Or for whatever. They would.
They call, they have successfully met that.
And are math and world languages the only areas?
Yes.
We do this?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Another piece of information, the seal of biliteracy. We talked about that briefly. Michelle brought that up when we updated a recent policy. But we do have nine students who did take the state recommended assessments and met the criteria. And so we're looking at the seal and putting that on their diploma as well. So wanted to tell you that progress. And something new, the Global Engagement Certificate. So we participated in a pilot this year. And students who successfully met the criteria for Global Engagement, you'll see as you progress in your packet, there are two pages that describe the criteria as well as the coursework and the service project. So we do have two students who will be honored at the State Capitol next month and will receive the certificate, and the Commissioner will be there. And so the families have been invited to attend as well. Yeah. So you've learned about the Rocket Book already. Yes.
Well, are, are they going to be presented to the board? Like, will we know who they are? Will they come with our seniors or something?
They are two juniors.
Oh, juniors.
Two juniors. Yep.
Can you share their names?
I, I, or do you want them to come? Do you want them to come at an unveiling in the future?
I don't know.
It's Wilson King and Bridget Snyder.
Oh, nice. Not surprised.
So those are the updates I wanted to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa, as always. All right, moving on to AgSTEM. Bob needed to excuse himself, so Greg, if you can cover that, too?
Yeah, there's nothing different on his report. That's what he has told me, because we haven't made any additional payments. So it's basically the same report you saw two weeks ago. So nothing new there. I'm going to be, due to the lateness of the hour, I'm not going to spend a lot of time giving you all the gory details. But the, we received our design development estimate from ONG at the Building Committee. And the design development estimate had been not insignificantly in excess of the budget that we had planned for it. If you recall, about a year and a half after that thing was prepared, we waited for the state to fund it and costs escalated. Also, we had escalations due to the fact that we added some items in. They never originally expected to have to replace the, to trench and replace the electric line that services the property. But we can't use the existing lines and, and still connect them to the transformers we need to do. And, and we're, we're getting help from Eversource. They are actually bringing the line to our property, but we still have to trench it. So that's about a $284,000 expense we didn't expect. They never expected the town of Washington to charge a $245,000 building permit fee. And so that's something that hadn't been budgeted for. So the costs had been driven up a bit. However, we have done some value engineering. We have put our, our architects and our, and our engineers and our construction manager through their paces, and they have come up with value engineering changes to the project that don't affect program. They don't make any less program, but they save money on how things are done. I'll give you an example. We went to a, a standard metal roof in the building for the, the animal building. Why did we, why did we change from a PVC roof? Well, we had a PVC roof in there, but the problem with a PVC roof is it requires additional support, more than a metal roof would require, because the metal roof will move with the building, the PVC roof won't. So therefore, it needs much more robust structure. And so by making changes to that building and changing the way we approached it and the type of building and whatnot on the roof, we still can get the same warranty we would have gotten on the roof. But the difference is we saved about a million dollars on the building. So there are things like that in there. So what we have done now is brought the project. It is completely on budget. We're fine. Everything's good. We are going to carry a deficit equal roughly to the cost of the electric change, because that was not originally in the program, but the state has indicated that that we could get 80% reimbursement, because it's required to do that, because we can't, we could continue to run right now without it, but once we do AgSTEM, we've got to add a different transformer and it's required. So in order to keep the possibility for receiving the higher reimbursement rate, we're going to carry that as a deficit. We're still carrying almost $4 million worth of contingencies. Those will probably not all be realized, and we'll be able to get back that. So we're, we are not likely to run in deficit when we get there. We're expecting, and if we are, we'll just remove it from the scope of the project and abandon the 80% reimbursement. So that's what we're doing. It's on target. It's on budget. It's moving forward. And we expect to hold, we expect to hold the dates reasonably closely. We're still working on that because, you know, we're going to be waiting for the construction documents. They're half finished. They should be completely finished shortly. Then we can get the final state approval to move forward to the bidding. So that's it. We are currently under, we are currently bidding the job of the demolition and remediation. That's currently being bid right now. And that work will start this summer, soon as school closes.
Michelle?
I just have a couple of questions. The first one, the. The first one, the roof, the PV, what do you, PVC? Why would, why was that in the original design?
Well, I...
I mean, what was the benefit? It must have been...
The architect felt it was a good roof. It also is, it's also a white roof, or a light-colored roof, and it also helped them get some of their credits for not, it's not Leeds Silver, it's the State High Performance Standard, which is the equivalent of Leeds Silver. So there were a variety of reasons they used certain things. We, they were going to put PVC roofs, white PVC roofs on the new additions, and also on the portions of the building that were being renovated, but we've sort of are doing something different with the portions being renovated, and they've gone back to a different type of roofing on the others that is white, because they need to be able to reflect the sun in order to get their higher ratings on the energy efficiency. So that's probably why they were using that roof, but it's not the only roof that could be used and still get us where we need to go.
Okay, great. My other question, and I'm sorry, because I just, I'm not intimately involved in the process, and I'm trying to understand. So ONG is putting, this is all about like the estimator, the project manager, the bidding. ONG, we hired them to put together estimates from the drawings that the architects do, correct?
Actually, we hired them to be the construction manager. One of the, and they are going to manage the construction project. Not only are they a construction manager, they're a construction manager at risk, which means that once they put the job out to bid, they will come in with a guaranteed maximum price, and if the price comes in higher than that, that's their problem. They have to deal with any overruns. If the price comes in lower than that, we get the savings. So that's their primary job, and one of the things they do is every time the architect produces a different level, when they produce schematic drawings, they would estimate the value, that when they produce the design development drawings, they get an estimate that's closer to what the values of the school are going to be, and then when the construction documents are figured, and it goes out to bid, they produce the final, the final estimating.
So, so they're a construction manager at risk, but they're also putting together the estimates?
They have an estimator on staff. We met with him, actually.
Well, I'm just, because if they, I'm trying to understand...
What an estimate means versus a bid?
No, no, no. What their motivation to keep the costs down would be. It seemed to me it would be in their best interest to estimate high.
No, actually, it's not.
Why?
Well, because if they estimate too high, then we may decide to cancel the project. So you see, there's, there's a, what they do is, is they, and estimates are not just based on what do we want to push the price to. What they do is take what the architect specifies, and they go out and they estimate by checking with, I make sure they go out in the marketplace, look and see what people will charge for that. They're looking at that in today's dollars. And then they carry an escalation for six months between now and when the actual, you know, they actually have the bidding completed. And so what they're doing, they used to have, they used to be carrying a much longer, a much larger, a much larger contingency for escalated costs. That contingency is getting reduced, because they don't have as long a period of uncertainty. So what they do is they go out and figure out what today's cost is, they then put that number down on a piece of paper, then they, then they add an escalation factor, and then they give you what they think the total job will cost when it's actually built. So the estimate is what it will actually build, based on today's dollar costs, and then inflated by a guess of how far costs go. A couple other things that pushed up our costs, one of them was the, with all the threatened tariffs coming out of the Trump administration. And, and the reason for that is, what's happened is, when the tariffs are threatened, steel manufacturers price those potential market disruptions into their prices. So the price of steel, I'm told, has gone up as a result of that. Even though the tariffs haven't been imposed, you know, the threat of it is enough to cause them to reprice. In addition, we had three hurricane, three major hurricanes, and other coastal flooding and whatnot in, over the course of the last season of hurricanes, and that has driven up the price of construction materials in general, higher than usual because of the shortage of construction materials, because they had to be supplying so many markets. So these things have raised the amount of money that they've put in for contingency escalations as a result. That's part of the reason why the job cost has gone up, but we've now marked it back to where we need to be. We've marked it back to our budget, so we're no longer over budget, except for the $284,000 deficit we're deliberately carrying to preserve the 80% reimbursement on, on that item, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry for the long-winded answer.
Greg, has the Building Committee, on these value-engineered suggestions, has the Building Committee reviewed and voted on this, or is it still being deliberated?
No, the Building Committee has decided to accept the value engineering estimates, and there are some things on there that we decided we could accomplish a different way, and, and that we could, we could get what we needed, and there were things on there where we had, for example, we had a lot of decorative concrete in the project, which we've taken out on walkways in favor of standard concrete. Things like that have been done, and we have a list of items that we will put out as add-alt bids, so that we can get a, a bid from someone to add that back into the project if our contingencies resolve themselves in a way that allows us more money and more flexibility. But what we're trying really hard to do, and what we've been successful at so far, is to keep this job on budget. That's our goal, to have this job delivered on time and on, at, or under budget. And that's, that's the goal, and we are so far successful. But believe me, this was a hard process that took the better part of about three weeks, a really hard work to make sure that's where we were. And you'll see some things have been, will be removed from the project, or moved around, or done differently, but those items will probably come back into the project, because we don't expect the contingencies to be fully...
Other than the roof, is there anything else on that list that was noteworthy?
Well, you're going to see that we have, we have removed the outdoor riding ring from the thing, because that is not an expensive proposition for us to do it through our AgSTEM program, but, you know, to literally have that, that ring, it's really fences mostly is what's been eliminated, because what's going to happen is they're going to have created a, a surface. So it's really only the fences and probably a ring, you know, remove the lawn and replace it with a, with a, with a different surface. But it's not an expensive proposition, but it was, saved a good bit of money to take that out of the plans, but it's also is an add-alt bid, so we're going to have that go to bid. But it's a few things like that. But we felt it was important to, to make the full indoor ring available, and that's what we're doing, because that's something you don't want to go back and try to add later. Other things we could have taken out, we could have decided to forego replacing the walls around the science building part of the, the project. We were going to demolish those walls, take them down and replace them with modern walls, with windows in them, with, you know, just more insulated, better, better energy efficiency materials. We, we thought about removing that, but we said, "Yeah, we could save that money, and that would be good." But you know what? That's something that you don't want to do, because ultimately you have to replace all the windows in the school, and you've got to replace walls and things. This was an opportunity to get it done now, and to have a, you know, a really first-rate project over there. And so we removed things that we thought were easily added, we could easily add them back in. And it, but, but most of the things were finished details and stuff that really no one's going to notice. The important thing was, we wanted to keep 100% of the program. One of the things we did with the greenhouse is we removed the headhouse and instead placed it in the greenhouse. So it's now in the greenhouse as part of the greenhouse, and that works very well for us. It, it'll work. I mean, the uses and things that were going on in the headhouse, it would have been nice to have it as a separate building, but the cost of constructing that separate building just was a little bit too much. So we've, we've moved things around a little bit, but kept the basic structure of it in place. But those were the most, I think, the most significant things that we, you know, that we did. The biggest, the biggest single item was the EGAF building, the animal, Equine Animal Demonstration Building.
So DAS, in terms of the next big milestone, is DAS has to approve the final design documents to allow you to go, or the, or is it the construction documents to allow you to go to bid?
Construction documents must be completed and then submitted to DAS, and then DAS will look through those, and once their approval is had on those documents, we also, we're also still collecting a couple things from the Health Department related to some of our, you know, our septic system and whatnot. And we've been playing with the design of the septic system for the, the septic system for the pool was not in the original program either, and we've been playing with that design to see if there's a way we could treat the water rather than put it into a septic system, but we may end up having to build the septic system. So those, there's some permitting on that by the Department of Health that has to be completed. But once that's completed, design development, construction documents completed, it then goes to DAS for their approval, and once their approval is issued, then we can go out to bid. So we're expecting this stuff to go on during the course of May, June, and into July.
Okay. Michelle.
Without rehashing what the Building Committee has done, I just remember when we first started this, I, I went, I think I've been to three or four different agri-science programs in the state, and I don't remember any of them having the headhouse in the greenhouse. They all, it was separate, at least climate-wise, separate. And I'm just wondering, do we still have someone involved who, on the Building Committee, who is familiar with program and, and what is required?
No, we, we, we don't have program people. We've, we've, we've got people that are focused on building. When it comes to an issue of whether or not the combining of the headhouse and the greenhouse works, we, our architects consulted the greenhouse expert that was retained on the design and execution of the greenhouse to advise us, and that person indicated that it was, it was, it would work, and it was fine, it was not a...
So is this greenhouse expert somebody who's an expert in building greenhouses, or somebody who knows how agri-science programs?
They know how it functions, yeah. We, we looked into it. We also, the other thing I will tell you is that we also met, we also had a meeting with our, our curricular staff and our architects and, and construction manager. The idea there was, is we really wanted to make sure that we had a good handle on any potential changes that we could make or should not make based on the effect on curriculum, and we have worked very hard to try to make sure that the changes we make are not going to cause, you know, issues related to the curriculum. But that, that, it was decided that that could be done.
Okay.
That was, that was the advice to us.
Any other questions for Greg? I guess the one bit of news, certainly positive news, is I think the state increased the tuition grant portion. So what does that, what does that bring the grant total up to, what, about $3,800 per student?
Yes, $3,800 would be a $1,000 increase, yeah.
Right? Thirty-eight hundred per student?
Thirty-eight hundred plus your $6,700.
Right. I, yes, I would agree. John?
Yes, I noticed that in the email from Bob. However, we have to keep in mind that that is only an appropriation for the 2018-2019 school year. This, this grant money is appropriated by the legislature every year, and they simply added $2 million to, to the current year's appropriation, and that amount gets divided by the number of AgSTEM, or AgScience students in, in the entire state. This is not a guarantee that, that $1,000 will be in place over the next 20 years, and in fact, if you look at the last, three years ago, it was $3,200. For the last two years, it was $2,800. Yes, it may go up to $3,800, but our, our school year will not be included in that. They're going to make a decision next year as to how much the grant money will be. And there's another problem. Sometimes this money is appropriated quarterly. Sometimes, when the state runs into financial crisis, you could end up in the fourth quarter without seeing any payment. So it's not really money in the bank.
Thank you. Michael.
This is nothing to do with construction, but just for the good of the order, I don't know if any of you saw, there was an article in Edible Nutmeg, which is a free magazine given out in our area and a lot of different places, and there was a beautiful article that they had written about Nanowog and AgSTEM, and some of the changes that are going on in AgSTEM. So something to think about for maybe next year, a year from now, when we're looking at opening and maybe some of the new developments in AgSTEM. Maybe some good publicity for us.
Thank you, Greg. All right, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.